I took call to order the regular meeting notice for today. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic of which we are. May we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Wong.
Here.
Councilmember Shepard Rami.
Here.
Councilmember Udi.
Here.
Vice Mayor Talt.
You're.
Mayor Jacobowski.
Here. The agenda is posted seventy-two hours prior to each meeting at the following locations. City Hall, the Crowell Public Library, and the Stoneman Building. The agenda is also posted on the city's website. The city welcomes public input. At this time, the public may address the city council on items that are not on the agenda. Pursuant to state law, the city council may not discuss or take action on issues not on the median agenda. Is, let's say, please note that all comments are limited to two minutes and will be timed by city staff. I would now like to ask city clerk Baker to explain how public comment will work.
Thank you, Mayor. For each item on the agenda, there will be time for public comment. We will accept comments in three ways. First, we'll take in-person comments for each item. Please fill out a speaker card and turn it to me if you wish to speak on an item. There will be a countdown timer displayed on the projector screen to help speakers keep track of their remaining time to speak. Next, we will then ask for comments from our Zoom participants. When we ask for public comments via Zoom, there are two ways you can let us know you would like to speak. First, you can use the raised hand feature, which is a button that's found by clicking on participants and then clicking on raised hand on the bottom right side of the screen. Please not use this feature until we've asked for public comment, or else we may not see it or know which item you're asking to speak on. As a second option, you can send a message using the chat box saying you'd like to speak on a particular agenda item. Comments will be accepted only until the end of the public comment period for that item. Lastly, I will then read into the record any public comments received by email for that particular item. Due to technical limitations associated with gathering, printing, and sorting emailed public comment, the city has instituted a 3:00 PM cutoff the day of a Wednesday city council meeting for emailed public comments. This is to ensure there's sufficient time to gather and present the emailed comments at the city council meeting. Any comments received after the 3:00 PM deadline will be included in the public comic record, but will not be read at the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone here at this time who wishes to speak?
Yes, Ms. Emily.
Please come forward.
Thank you.
There, I apologize. I thought it was three minutes. But thank you, council members. Thank you for your time and your commitment to the city council. My name is Emily Burke. I have lived here in San Marino for fourteen years. My husband and I own our home on Lorraine where we live with our three boys. I work for Susan Masterman Architects out of South Pasadena, which has worked in San Marino for over twenty years. I'm here to talk about the planning department. I understand the trouble and slowdown that COVID has brought, as well as the shifting of employees to other cities. We have experienced similar situations in other cities, though San Marino in particular is the worst at the moment. As some, someone trying to do business with the planning department, I thought I would share our perspective and concern. We have a project submitted last year November for design review. We check in with the planning department to be able to give our client an update. If we are able to get a response back, which is difficult to get someone to call or email you back, they say the project is fourth in line. It has now been fourth in line for over a year. To us, it sounds as if no projects have gone through design review process. We have another project where construction was stopped by the planning department inspection. Again, we have difficulty getting planning to return a call or answer an email to resolve the issue. This delay costs the contractor and the owner money per day while the project is stopped. We should be able to resolve this in a timely manner for everyone. We hear contractors and owners avoiding the permitting process, knowing that they cannot get a timely response from planning. This is dangerous and not advantageous for the city. The joy of working with San Marino on the size of the department was that you could come to the counter and work directly with the planner to resolve any issues together. This is no longer possible, and when we are able to discuss any conflicts in the project, the planners are strictly focused on code and not how that may appear in designer in the neighborhood context. Items come up in construction that cannot be predicted at the time of design review or even planning review. The planner has the power to make a decision on planning and zoning issues so that the project can move forward.
Go ahead and give us your last few sentences, please.
Delaying response, not responding to phone calls or pushing it to another hearing is not acceptable. I understand there has been progress on new or temporary hires. I would also just suggest we need a liaison to the department, possibly a former design review member that can work with staff on the process of projects submitted and reviews. When we pay the city review fees, we expect the project is taken in for review, not held or kicked down the road. The delay prevents future projects and fees from being collected by the city. If the process for design review could be streamlined, then the planner would have more time to work through construction issues that arise and work with the community to resolve planning and zoning issues that conflict with the overall design and heritage of San Marino neighborhoods.
Thank you so much for coming out. We appreciate this. Thank you. Is there anybody else present? Seeing none, do we have anybody online?
Let me give just a moment to see if there's any raised hands. I do not see any raised hand. We did receive an emailed public comment, however, that's a general comment. I was able to previously distribute this to both council and the public, so I'm just going to summarize it and not read it in entirety. It's from Ms. Nina Chen. She's a sophomore at San Marino High School, and she sent over several questions and suggestions for improvements that the city can look into.
Thank you, and we appreciate that also. And that's it?
And that is it.
Thank you. Before we move to the interim city manager's report, I would like to, at this time, call on our city attorney Montez for comment, please.
Madam Mayor, members of the city council, just a brief announcement for the public. The city and city manager Marlo have entered into a separation agreement pursuant to which she will remain on administrative leave through November 2nd, which will be her last official day with the city. That concludes the announcement, and with that, I will turn it over to our acting city manager for his report.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
Wonderful to have you here. Thank you.
As I've stated each one of you, it's an honor to serve our community, and I appreciate the confidence that you have in me to take over this role. It's been made easier by a great team behind me, the executive team, and a great chief of police. So they're making this transition, I think, as easy as it could, as easy as it could possibly be. I did want to share with you tonight just a few future events. If you look at the screen, the first one being this Saturday, the literary libations. It will be here at the Crowell Public Library at 6:00 PM, and I understand there's lots of, lots of things planned. It'll be a great event and a great fundraiser for our library. Also, at the end of this month, we have the second year of our Halloween trunker treat, October 28th, Friday, from 6:00 to 10:00. And in the next few weeks, you'll hear more about this and potentially what you may find when you, when you show up at Lacy Park and how you may be involved. And Kathy needs volunteers, so if you're not doing anything that evening, she may put you to work. But it was a great event last year, crowded. It is a little different this year in that we're charging a small fee for residents and then a larger fee for non-residents. There was quite a few people last year, and I think this helped to narrow that. It was both somewhat of a public safety concern last year with John and I. We didn't anticipate that size of crowd, but this year we'll be prepared. And lastly, we have, we did receive our new ambulance, and it was years in in arriving because of supply chain issues and recalls and COVID, variety of issues, kept it from arriving here, but it is here. It is in service. We will have a dedication November 12th at 10:00 AM at the San Marino Fire Department, Fire Station 91. I look forward to seeing you there, and that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Questions or comments? Councilmember Huang?
No, no comments. Thank you.
Councilwoman Shepard Rami?
No, I just wanted to say welcome and thank you so much, Acting City Manager, for stepping up and helping us out at this time. Much appreciated and looking forward to working with you.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi?
Yeah, in building off of our, our speakers' comments and looking at the dashboard, we're monitoring the number of building permits, the number of treatment permits, maybe some measurement about how long it takes for, you know, an application to be open and closed, but also be measuring efficiency.
All right. Funny, Seeger and I have actually discussed that, and I think just the level of staffing and the catch-up he's had to do has prevented him from putting that metric in place. But I know it's on his dashboard.
Good. Thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
No.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yeah, along the same lines, and I don't know if this was just an error, but I'm looking at the community development dashboard as this building permits issued. And I note that you say we've issued 237 so far this fiscal year. And then down below, it has a red line, FY 2122. Should that be fiscal year 2223?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, that's it.
Thank you.
Well, could you just make sure that gets corrected?
Yes.
As you put it up on the, on the, on the website.
Yes. Thank you. And I have no other questions or comments. I have seen the ambulance, and it's shiny and beautiful. On one hand, I hope it doesn't get a lot of use.
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, do I have a motion and a second to waive further readings?
So moved.
Thank you. Anyone?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, so under new business, item number one, we have an adoption of an MOU with the Police Officers Association Resolution. May we please call on a presentation from Director Guerrero? And we would like to once again say we are so pleased that you are employed with our city.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Before you tonight, for your consideration, it's the adoption of the memorandum of understanding with the Police Officers Association and Resolution Number 22-40 approving the updated 2022 salary schedule. The City of San Marino's Police Officers Association and the memorandum of understanding was previously adopted on January 31st, 2020, which expired on June 30th, 2022. This MOU contains provisions related to compensation and working conditions for the association. At the council's direction, the city and employee associations engaged in the meeting confer process for several months. The city has a tentative agreement with the association, the details of which are included as an attachment. In sum, the term of the agreements are two years, retroactive back to July 1st, 2022, and expiring on June 30th, 2024. The employees will be receiving a base salary increase of 7% in the first year and 4% in the second year, a one-time bonus for current employees who are employed by the city during COVID-19, an increase in the city's contributions for employee health insurance, and some smaller adjustments specific to POA. All provisions negotiated were pursuant to the city council's direction. Today's item includes the MOU for POA and the resolution approving the updated 2022 salary schedule. Staff recommends that the city council adopt the memorandum of understanding for the Police Officers Association and Resolution Number R 22-24 approving the updated 2022 salary schedule. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I will now open it for questions. Councilmember Udi, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard Rami, any questions?
No, thank you.
Councilmember Huang?
No questions. Thank you.
And Vice Mayor Talt?
I just have one question. Are the, and if you would remind me, the, the chief of police is not under the same proposal, correct? We do that as unrepresented?
Correct.
Okay, do we know the disparity in some of these benefits between the chief of police and his subsidiary subordinates?
The disparities have been brought to my attention by chief earlier today, so I will be looking at those.
Okay.
And bringing them back.
Okay, yeah, I, and I would imagine the same stands true for the fire chief as well.
We can look at that as well.
Okay. Yeah, I, I went back and tried to find that information this afternoon, but I couldn't locate it, so I do appreciate that. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Any other questions? Vice Mayor?
No, I'm sorry.
And I have no questions. You're welcome. It's been an evening with us. I'd like to open the item up for public comment. Do we have any comment?
I did not receive any from anybody in the room. Let me give just a moment for anybody to raise their hand on Zoom. Maybe you have a few participants. Okay, I'm not seeing any raised hand, no comment on this item.
Thank you. At this point, I'd like to bring the item back for council. Is there anything further from any of my colleagues? Seeing none, may I have a motion, please?
I move to adopt the memorandum of understanding for the Police Officers Association. Number two, adopt Resolution Number R-22-40 approving the updated 2022 salary schedule. And three, approve additional appropriations in the amount of $396,307 for year 2022-23 to be spread over the affected full-time personnel budget line items shown in this retrospective, sorry, budgets.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Item number two on the agenda, fiscal year 2122 budget carryovers and fiscal year 22 and 23 rebudgets. May we have a presentation, please, from Director Chung?
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council members. The staff report before you, for your consideration, is to prove the request that fiscal year 2122 carryovers and updates to the fiscal year 2223 rebudgets, as noted in attachments one, two of the staff report. Carryovers happen on the operating budget side due to mainly timing of projects. This past year particularly is due to supply constraints. The total fiscal year 2122 carryover request is $264,325. The rebudgets happen on the capital improvement project side, as CIPs take more time than a year to complete, and mainly due to timing of the project, and unfinished capital projects are often anticipated and rebudgeted to the current fiscal year. This is the final cleanup for the fiscal year 2122 CIP budget. The total fiscal year 2122 CIP rebudget request is $4,815,048. Of that, 3.9 million is for the street rehab project. That ends my presentation. Staff is available for any questions from the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi, any questions?
No questions. Thank you.
Councilmember Huang, any questions?
No, no question. Thank you.
Councilmember Shepard Rami, any questions?
No, thank you.
Vice Mayor Talt, any questions?
You may not know the answer to this question, but one is the citywide traffic circulation study going to be complete?
I do not know that answer, but maybe I can look towards maybe chief or...
At the last meeting, the Public Safety Commission meeting, they were told that they might expect it in November.
Okay.
And it would come before us in December then, if they pass it forward.
Okay. That's great. Thank you.
My understanding.
No more questions.
Go ahead. Would you like to add to this?
Yes, yes, ma'am. When the draft comes in, which should be within a month, it will be reviewed by Public Safety Commission and then moved forward. Thank you.
Well, additional information appreciated. Thank you so much. Any further questions, Vice Mayor?
No.
I have none. I'd now like to open this up for a public comment. Does anyone wish to speak on it?
I have no request from in-person. Let me give our Zoom participants a moment to raise hands if they'd like to comment. Yes, you know, raise hands, no requests for comment on this item.
Thank you. I bring it back to my colleagues for any further discussion. Is there anyone who wishes to speak further on this matter? Councilmember Udi?
No.
Shepard Rami? Huang? Talt? Seeing none, would I, would someone like to make a motion, please?
I move to approve the requested fiscal year 202122 carryovers and updates to the fiscal year 202223 rebudgets.
Is there a second?
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepard Rami?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And we see that Director Chung is going nowhere, so we, may we ask you to give us a report on item number three, an authorization for an agreement?
Great, thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, the staff report before you, for your consideration tonight, is for the agreement to Matrix Audio Video Designs for the bathroom AV upgrades project and appropriate funds in the amount of $44,557, which will make the total budget for the project $78,657. The bathroom AV was installed when the library was under construction back in 2008, and the AV system is approaching its 15th year in service, and very minor upgrades were done during this timeline. It has shown its age, as majority of the components are not serviceable, as replacement components are no longer supported or offered. Currently, we're using about 20% of the current AV system as we look around. As many of the components aren't compatible with our current technologies such as hosting this hybrid meeting as well. Furthermore, the current AV setup also takes two recreational staff, about an hour to set up, and also another additional 30 minutes to, to break apart for other meetings and, and events as well. I think there's a person in the back there, rec staff, the wizard behind the curtain. I know Randall doesn't get much praise, but he does fantastic work for us, and he makes this really work for us. And under your tables there, there's just thousands of probably feet of cable, cabling that takes place. So I do really believe that we've maximized the life of this AV unit. Staff reached out to six of the vendors. Three vendors actually submitted their bids. I detailed, I did a detailed walkthrough with three of the vendors. It was a good hour, hour and a half, just kind of going through our current system. What can we use? What can we salvage? Majority of it, they said, basically, we do need to upgrade. And so we talked about what works for the organization. What is it that's going to give us future proofing of any kind of AV system? And also just trying to integrate it so that it's plug and play, meaning it's easy to set up and break down as well, so that we can save staff time. After an extensive review of our proposal, staff is recommending to award the agreement to Matrix Audio Visual Designs from Burbank for their qualifications, experience, and understanding of the scope of work for the bathroom needs. Matrix AV Designs comes highly recommended from its references and has 30 years of experience creating quality AV for numerous cities and counties, including chambers, multipurpose rooms, and community centers. Even though Matrix AV Design wasn't the lowest bidder, staff believes that this will provide the best combination of service and price. This ends my presentation. I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. At this point, we will have questions from council members. Councilmember Huang, any questions?
Um, yeah, I have a question. I just want to make sure there, it's the same kind of equipments based on their bidding, or we don't know what we're getting?
Oh, no, it's detailed out regards to what equipment they're going to provide us. Most of it is going to be replaced to current HD standards, audio standards. We're also recommending to put in wireless systems so that basically recharge the unit, and you just mount it, and it works. It just saves staff time, and so it should be a whole new ramp of new systems.
No, I just want to make sure it's, you know, comparing apple to apple, you know?
Oh, you mean regards to the bids that were offered?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. Yes, the bids that were submitted originally, they had an idea of what works for us. And then I went through each of the proposals and then tried to compare apples to apples regards to what system is wireless, what system is the video portion, projectors. We went through all that detail to make sure that the proposals were an equal comparison to each other.
Great, thank you. Yes.
No more questions.
Thank you. Councilmember Shepard Rami, any questions?
Yes, I do. Thank you very much, Mayor. Director Chung, I was wondering a couple of things about the process. I do not know how. It's still a mystery as to what goes out with RFPs versus, in this situation, you said that the staff itself reached out to six vendors, and so I wanted to know how, which six, and why? Why wouldn't this go through a process where it was a public bidding?
So basically, I posted this on Planet Bids to see if I can get any bids, and there were no bids that came in. So then what I did was I actually just Google mapped, looked around local AV companies, and I came down to six that were companies that I thought did other municipal work in the past. And that's how I was able to produce RFP, and I sent it out to those six, and only three came back.
Okay. And then also about that process, part of it, it struck me that our initial budget proposal was $34,500. And so I'm correct that this is 78?
Yes.
So it's more than double, and I'm just trying to figure out if you have any idea of why the first bid might have been so much lower, or first, I'm sorry, our budget estimate, I should say, was a great deal lower, and how that should affect our decision tonight?
So even if we go back even further, back prior fiscal year, we actually budgeted $19,500 for the lighting and the AV project. We quickly found out that that wasn't sufficient enough to do lighting or AV, and then we came to council with the $34,500 budget. I reached out to public work staff regarding to how do we come up with this? Unfortunately, we did not go out with an AV expert to get an idea of how much this is going to cost. And of course, this was back in February or so. Things have accelerated in regards to inflation as well, but regards to overall costing, that $34,500, it was staff's best guess regards to prior years' worth of what we thought AV was going to cost. And then after the bids came in, I too was surprised regards to what came in, but this is kind of what the market is right now regards to AV. I think there's a high demand of AV, but also there's, procuring these components are difficult, hence it increases the prices as well.
Okay, thank you, and I think I have one more question. Hold on for just a second, if you would. Oh, and in comparing them, I noticed, for example, you talk about the difference between, I guess it is Sunset that was lower, the lower bid, and Matrix, and that their wireless cameras, for example, in Matrix. But then I reviewed the contract, it's not that far, it's a different contract, but there's not wireless. These are going to be fixed in the ceiling. So I'm wondering if we actually compare components of them, because on page 63 of our binder, it says that our, the cameras are four ceiling mounted in place cameras with fan and tilt. So I'm just wondering also what the difference is between the two that would necessitate 20-plus thousand dollars?
Yeah, so regardless of Sunset, specifically for the video cameras, Sunset didn't really propose a solution regards to a camera. They really said, maybe we can utilize a current camera up there. We weren't able to get it to work. They said, we'll come out, take an evaluation. And so I didn't feel comfortable regards to what they were recommending, whereas Matrix came in and said, we've worked on similar multi rooms. We recommend a three system so that you only going to use most likely two, but three for future proofing in case if you want to have a different view of the room as well. Also, that made sense. Regards to the pricing of the 20,000 versus Sunset. Sunset, there were many red flags when I was having the conversation with Sunset. First and foremost, correspondence was really poor. And then I made the reference calls just to see what, how the quality of work was. And most of their clientele was actually churches and not many cities or municipalities. And then thirdly, regards to costs, I just felt that even though $20,000 was quite higher for Matrix, I believe that overall the other, as you can see, the third bidder too as well, came in relatively to Matrix. And I also talked to Matrix regards to how could it be even, why is it that it's coming in so much lower? And so we were able to discuss regards to costing, labor, and it really was that Sunset was just costing a little more on the labor side, but they're looking at components that were a lot cheaper. And so I thought that for overall quality of products and service, Matrix was the best.
Thank you. Anything further?
Nope.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi?
No questions. I'll thank you for your diligence on this.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Talt?
Yes, I concur with Councilmember Udi's comment. A lot of hard work and detail work went into this, and I... hard work and detail work went into this and I appreciate you being concerned about enough about the city to make sure they're getting the the best, it most quality deal, but I do have a question for our city attorney in that regard. Are we okay with that? Because it's not the least, the lowest bid?
Uh, yes, this is, this is a combination uh, project where you, you're doing both consulting in terms of the design of the system, the installation of the system and making it all work as well as uh, procuring materials and doing installation. So it's a, that's why you look at more like an RFP rather than a uh, public works contract bid where you can enumerate exactly what you need and everybody who's bidding is going to propose exactly the same thing. Here, you've got a different set of
Parameters.
Parameters. You've got an apple, an orange, and a banana. I know we talked about comparing apples to apples.
Will they use windows at all?
Exactly, exactly.
I appreciate, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Nothing further.
Um, I, I just have one brief question that's somewhat of a follow-up, um, going back to the process. Um, we have heard of previous presentations from directors referencing uh, Planet Bid. Could you just give a three, four sentence from around what that is?
The Planet Bid is, it's run by Public Works Superior because most of it is pub, public, um, public works contracts, but that's an that's basically a, a dashboard where most vendors can see what projects are out there, where they can bid. You put specifications or RFPs, you post it there and they get that information and they make that decision to go ahead and bid for those projects.
So that did not draw excitement. Thank you very much.
Great.
Um, at this point, is there anyone from the public wishing to speak?
I have not received any in-person request for comment. Let me give Zoom participants a chance to raise hands or send a message in the chat. Okay, I'm not seeing any raised hands, so no requests for comment on this item.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to bring it back to council for uh, any discussion. Uh, Councilmember Shepherd-Romney, any question, uh, discussion points?
I had one other, um, uh, thought to discuss with councilmembers and you, Mayor. Um, concerning, we had talked about this being done in conjunction with the San Marino Center and since we've had a big investment of staff time and effort to get this running, I know it might not be the best and I apologize um, to the staff members who helped and have to work so hard on this. But I am um, trying to think of cost savings for this and whether it'd be better to do, uh, be done when we also have a consultant and we are buying equipment for the San Marino Center. Because I thought we had, that was part of the reason why we delayed this, I think, a year ago, two years ago, I don't remember. Probably pre-call, but I know that this has come up before with us.
That was for the lights. I don't remember having a discussion with respect to the AV system, but it was with the lights.
All right. And there will be an AV system at the San Marino Center.
We would hope so.
I think it's a stage even there. All right. So that's my concern. I, I would not vote to approve this at this time.
Thank you. Councilmember Huang?
Uh, no comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi?
I'm surprised that the system survived fifteen years without technology's change. So I think it would be due time to replace.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Tol?
I have nothing further. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, I concur. We've had a lot of wear and tear and I think that we need to um, get moving on this. And I was remiss in not thanking you, Director Chung. I um, really appreciate the personal touch you put into this because it did require a lot of dialogue. Uh, do I have a motion?
I move, go ahead. I move to authorize the agreement with Matrix Audio Visual Designs for the bathroom AV upgrades in the amount of seventy-eight thousand six hundred and fifty-seven dollars and appropriate an additional forty-four thousand one fifty-seven to account five ninety-one dash ninety dash forty-six thirteen dash zero four fives bathroom AV upgrades.
Thank you. And is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
No.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tol?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, um, we are moving to the consent calendar. Um, at this point, I'm going to ask councilmembers if they would like to pull any item from consent. As a reminder, councilmembers may vote no on a specific consent calendar item without pulling the item for discussion. Um, Councilmember Huang, would you like to pull anything?
Oh, no, thank you.
Councilmember Udi?
No, thank you.
Uh, Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Um, yes, I would like to pull fifteen and I do not know if we have anybody here who could answer a question about eleven. Um, I don't seem to have anybody from Public Works here. Is that correct? Um.
I could try.
I think I.
Break with uh, Director Wu on both these items, but I could try to answer.
Okay. That's okay. I, I will speak to that. I don't oppose it. I just wanted to know where the rubberized material was used, but I can ask.
So you'd like to not pull eleven?
Yeah, that's fine. Fifteen, okay. Um, in that case, do, um, and I'm sorry, uh, I'm losing track where I left off.
No.
Member, okay, we have nothing further to pull. Um, do I have an emotion to approve items four through fourteen?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tol?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, um, item number fifteen, um, councilmember, would you like to um, offer any discussion questions?
Sure, thank you. Um, I, I am pulling this as a, I'm going to say a community service in part. Um, I think it's important for the community to hear about the work that's been done um, and the level of analysis that was done by then Chief, uh, Rueda, now acting city manager, as well as I think the tie-in, um, I don't know if it's Captain Settler the whole time, um, from the police department who assisted. Um, but this is critical, especially in situations that we might have in our future to be so well-prepared. And I wanted to uh, allow um, acting city manager to go into this to some extent and inform our community about what's been planned. Thanks.
Uh, thank you, councilmember. So on uh, September sixteen, the, our disaster council, it's described in our municipal code, reviewed the um, city's uh, newest version of the emergency operations plan. And I, I've always thought plans are sort of useless, but the planning, um, the guys in Howard said that, but the planning is indispensable. And, and that has proved to be um, something that in my career at least, uh, that has proved to be of value. Uh, this plan has been in the works for three years. It's been undergoing a number of updates and annexes uh, to deal with things like a pandemic. Uh, we uh, sorted through an emergency uh, earthquake annex that we'll again train on next week. And this really does describe for us our jurisdictional incident management and where we fit in uh, both our operational area, our county, our region, and then our state. And while these plans aren't required, um, uh, they are uh, best practice. In this case, uh, the state stopped reviewing these plans, but we did send these to both our disaster management area coordinator and the county of Los Angeles and they reviewed our plan and thought it uh, hit all the items and was an excellent, uh, was an excellent uh, plan. Uh, the other thing, I think the most important thing this plan does, it does establish uh, our uh, basically our training curriculum for the executive team and city employees. Uh, we've been conducting a, an emergency operations training each month with the executive team and really the uh, the plan serves as our, as our curriculum to train uh, executive team members uh, on their role and responsibilities and how disaster management might work in our city. And uh, I think one of the most difficult things I run into, not only with employees, but with residents is they could never imagine that it's not going to be seventy-five degrees here and sunny and beautiful. And uh, I think Florida was a good reminder that uh, it doesn't do that. And that's when plans and planning really do become invaluable. So I, I do thank the, our disaster council for taking the time to review it and uh, the chief of police for joining me in this effort and and uh, this will be, serve as our curriculum for the next few years. And it does get reviewed and approved every three years, uh, but it's constantly undergoing enhancements and change.
Thank you very much. Um, any questions from councilmembers, Councilmember Huang, since you were?
No, no, thank, I want to thank the chief and, you know, both chiefs, uh, for putting these together. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Udi?
No questions. Thank you for the.
Thank you.
Three years.
Vice Mayor Tol?
This is available on our website, I would imagine.
Uh, there's four parts to it. There's one that's confidential, that's not posted, but the other three parts are posted on our website.
Generally speaking, recognizing that it's confidential, and I did not go through all of this. But uh, the confidential part concern, or why is it confidential?
It's basically personal contact information for employees, um, and others that um, mobility, um, challenged people in our community that we contacted during power outages and um, I think those are the two major areas that we have in our plan that we wouldn't want the public necessarily to.
That's just when you mentioned confi, and they should be confidential, but whenever anybody mentions confidential, it yeah, concerning a transparent public entity, it makes me.
Your, your phone number.
We know we need extra help.
Really?
Um, I'm sorry, was that, uh, there any, since you had requested the report, I presume you have no questions, correct?
I didn't make questions. Thank you.
I have none and um, do we have anything from the public on this?
No request in person. Let me see if anybody raises their hand on Zoom. No request for comment on this item.
Thank you. And I bring it back to council. Is there any further discussion? Um, I'd like to express my appreciation to all who worked on this. These things are crucial for us going forward because as you said, we just don't know what we'll hit. So uh, seeing no further discussion, uh, would you like to make um, a motion, Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Sure, I move to approve resolution number R dash twenty-two dash thirty-seven, adopting the twenty twenty-two City of San Marino Emergency Operations Plan.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wong?
Yes.
Councilmember Shepherd-Romney?
Yes.
Councilmember Udi?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Tol?
Yes.
Mayor Jacobowski?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Um, at this point, do we have any written communication or public writings for distribution? Seeing no response, um, we again open up for public comment. Uh, do we have anyone wishing to speak at this time, city clerk?
Nobody in the room. Let me see if anybody on Zoom raises their hand. No request for comment.
Thank you. And I come back to um, city council members' request for future agenda items. Um, would any of my colleagues like to request an item for a future agenda?
Um, yes, please, Mayor.
Sure.
Um, I have been in discussions and I think you were as well with a, a community member who is greatly concerned about the um, speed with which uh, traffic is going on around our schools. And I wanted to, I know we, we discussed this or brought this up the last meeting and I was wondering if the chief would entertain or if there is such a thing as like a program to slow down San Marino and not, you know, always be waiting perhaps on the terrace or, but is there something we could do now in terms of trying to get um, parents or not even parents, but parents and the drivers who pass by our schools to um, maybe slow down a little bit now that school is fully in session and kids are both biking, walking, you know, commuting to school?
There was, excuse me, there was a discussion, I think at the end of last uh, council meeting to do that and refer it back to the Public Safety Commission. That'll be brought up um, next Monday.
Okay.
Um, ensure that Commander Blondie does that. He'll be covering for me.
All right.
In that time.
Thank you very much. I appreciate the effort.
Thank you. Thank you for that concern. Uh, anyone have any other future agenda items? Um, with that, do any councilmembers have any special adjournments you'd like to request?
I would like to request you, uh, adjourn the name of the period, Haki Plunkett, she was a near lifetime, if not lifetime, resident of, uh, San Marino, um, who passed away. It's been about six weeks ago at the age of, she was in her nineties, I know that much. Um, and, and she was a lovely woman, very involved in San Marino Community Church. Uh, but she grew up here and um, her husband passed away several years ago, but I'd like to adjourn her off.
No, that's lovely. Thank you. Any other special adjournments?
No, I agree with um, uh, Vice Mayor Tol. She was a wonderful member of San Marino Garden Club as as well as many organizations and really lovely. So she will be missed by many.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Uh, without anything further, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, Jill.